All right, all right, we'll open up the meeting. Any need for executives?
We've got two things under personnel, one highway matter, one planning commission matter.
I'll make a motion. Move this as opposed to any others.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any need to amend the agenda?
There's two things, if you don't mind, now, Chair. One is our annual audit question, their acknowledgement. It's just something in your packet tonight that the clerk's office has presented from Pat, Liz, and Helen, just filling out the auditor's checklist, and it's just you stating that you've received it.
Okay.
And then the other thing is a discussion of dog license late fees.
Okay.
Move to accept the agenda as amended.
All in favor say aye.
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 Late.
Anything on the minutes of last meeting?
If not, here they are. We've got a chair here or there.
Are you ready for me?
Well...
Not yet, no, I just wanted to let you know where you can sit.
I was just worried.
It'll be a while. I'm afraid. Watch your step, please.
Every meeting.
Every meeting.
Can't take you anywhere.
I know.
This could be one of those nights. Yes.
Anything on the orders?
I see there was a Potter Creek Engineering Depot Hill. I thought we were getting pretty well done with all the...
We are wrapping up. Pretty much all we've got now is awaiting the delivery of the portable generator to operate either pump station or even the Elm Street pump station. That's still got a few more weeks left, and we are having discussions about how to use, if we are going to use, some unspent authority, since they decided not to proceed with the oxygenation automation at the plant. So, we're still looking at those options. If there's nothing else, I'll just send you down, I think, four, five, maybe six orders. Hopefully, we've got all the stickies in the right place. And here's payroll, Joe. I need another pen, I don't have any ink.
Things are colorful indeed.
All right, Town Manager's report?
Thank you, Alicia. Town staff will be honored with a picnic lunch on Friday, September 10th, at noon at the Recreation Pavilion. The new town highway truck has finally been delivered, taken possession of, lettered, and is ready for Pittsburgh Day. The Highway Crew is wrapping up its fiscal year 2021 grant-funded roadside ditching project along Sugar Hollow Road. The town has recently learned that its request for another grant in aid for fiscal year 2022 has been approved, with more roadside ditching planned for Fire Hill and Allen Mills Road. Our friends from Sullivan &amp; Powers will be in town during the week of Labor Day to perform their annual external audit of the town's books. As you will recall, perhaps, with regard to this ARPA money, the American Rescue Plan Act money, the town originally was informed that it could expect to receive two annual payments of $145,882.39 for a two-year total of $291,764.77, with the issue of funding earmarked for Vermont Counties still unresolved. The county money issue has now been resolved in the favor of the towns. All that money is now being reallocated to Vermont towns. The good news, bottom line, for the town of Pittsburgh is that between this year and next, instead of that original amount that we just discussed, we can expect to receive a total of $833,106.86. Jim Yocati has requested to do some metal detecting on town property. It's the well on River Street. There's a lot right outside that well, as he will be visiting the area and is something of a history buff. I have agreed, so long as he pledges to turn over anything of historical value to the Historical Society, and he's agreed to that. And finally, the town offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day, Monday, September 6th.
Thanks, John. Any select board member remarks? Nope. Any public comment? All right, so I think before we get to the bridge replacement projects, I think this will take a little bit, why don't we do, Chad, we'll talk about the Highway Department truck bids.
We received, um, three bids, right, Chad? One from Ford of Clermont, one of G Stone Motors, one of Auto Saver Ford for the new Highway 550 truck with potential trade-in. The low bid is Michael Stewart of Ford of Clermont. However, the town would net a better outcome if it still wants to trade in the vehicle to Auto Saver Ford, because their $18,000 trade-off for our 2010 350 is $18,000, as opposed to the $10,000 trade from the low bidder. So, the net price on that transaction would be $45,193.
Okay.
Now, that includes the body too, right? So, the truck is ready to go?
With the service body.
With the...
Right. The plow will be an additional, getting it fitted.
Fitted for the plows additional, okay. But it does have the service. It's not just a bare cabin chassis?
No, this is...
Chair. Cabin chassis, been a long day.
Yeah, this is a utility body.
Utility body on it.
Similar to what we have.
Now, were the other bids, did they have those bodies on too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was all truck bodies.
As far as, or if they were necessary, is there enough difference between the bid prices to encourage us to... Stone would be the closest one, wouldn't it?
Yeah, but they didn't even offer a trade-in. So, they're kind of out of it.
And the price differential on the net is about $5,000. $5,500, yeah.
My thinking was, if we were right close, you know, I might consider, well, a few hundred more, but service would be much easier.
Comstock's not that far.
That's not the case.
No. And Auto Saver's not terribly far.
No.
Right, it isn't a whole lot farther, really, to Comstock to...
Not a hell of a lot, no.
To Stewart, I mean, a little, but not that much, really.
Not much.
Yeah.
I think...
For that trade-in price, it's...
Yeah.
Any Ford dealer, if it's a Ford, they'll work on whether they sell it or not, they'll tender the warranty anyway.
Yeah, warranty. So, no, did bids go out to Chevy or anybody else?
No, it was just for the, just for a 550.
Okay, so there was no...
Comp.
So, you were looking just for a Ford?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there were five total vendors, right? Give or take?
Yeah.
That you had identified? Yep.
Is there any reason why you just went with Ford?
No, just, we've had good luck with the 550. Price-wise, that's been working out of it. Utility-wise, it's lower than what that Chevy is.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I like, I like the Chevy we have, but as far as having that set up with the body and stuff, Ford's, works well.
Okay, no, I just wondered.
Yeah, no, no real preference, but...
You're happier with the Ford than you've got a Chevy?
Yeah, I'm happy with all that we have.
The Ford's preferable over the Chevy, in your mind?
Yeah, I mean, we've had good luck with, with the 550s that we've had in the past, and so we don't set up quite as high as what that Chevy does after that.
For what you're doing with it, yeah, where you got to be able to get in and out of it.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and award the bid to Auto Saver. What was the amount, John? $45,000?
$45,193 with the trade.
Right.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any idea of delivery date? How far out there?
I have no clue. I had a couple of questions.
The last one was 18 months, it turned out.
Yeah. Well, but that wasn't the truck, that was the body.
But, we get to use that truck for the trades, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a left-on message today, I had a couple other questions, and if I get one come on?
Nothing that would affect our decision here?
Oh, no, 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 just, no.
All right. Great.
Thanks very much, Chad.
Discussion plan for the tree planting?
Yeah, Al Willberge is here. He's consulted with the town and done a lot of free work, and has access to wholesale pricing, as he is a person in the biz, as they say. And he saw, as did I, really focused on Chief Hooker's observation, that our three nice sugar maples were dying off in the front along the road. They were mature and gave us a good several decades, I would imagine, but they had to be taken down, and now the question is, that front, the front edge is looking pretty bare, and it'd be nice to supplement that with some new plantings, and we were talking about, we had input from, I think, Bob Harnish and Barrett Morgan and Al, and I think that the idea was, maybe a couple of red maples, one sugar maple, and a conifer tree, like a balsam, a balsam, that could be maybe decorated for the holidays along that road. So, instead of those three large trees, we'd have three maples and a balsam, which obviously would start out much smaller diameter than our mature trees had been, but we're looking at three and a half inch caliper?
Three to three and a half on some, three and a half to four on one, because I didn't have the three to three and a half available in the sugar maple.
And then the conifer, or the balsam, is seven or eight feet tall?
Uh, yeah, and it's going to be a fresh dug from the fall, so it'll be kind of what you might want to call a brand-new tree, as opposed to the ones that had been sitting in the nursery for all summer long.
Right, right. And, of course, the Highway Crew can always help scoop holes and help us get them in the ground, like they did years ago at the rec area, and those trees are transported very well. And we have a price with delivery that seemed fairly reasonable to you, because, again, these are wholesale prices.
Yeah, somewhere less than $2,000, I think, for the four trees.
Including delivery, I think, yeah.
Well, delivery is $175. And, of course, they have the ability to forklift all the trees right next to the job site, so if Chad and his crew and myself show up, we don't have to move the trees very far to get them in the ground. And we, we, one person did suggest the balsam fir for possible Christmas tree decorating, but when John and I discussed the project, I came over here and I noticed that where the three trees used to be, there is room for a fourth tree. And so, we discussed where we thought that Christmas tree would go the best, since we could put the other three trees wherever we chose to. So, as it is right now, if you're, if you go out the front door, there's a telephone pole pretty much straight across from the front door, and the Christmas tree was going to go just a little bit to the right of that. It would fill in the blank where there never was a tree, and it would be just a little offset from the main entrance, which I think would, you know, be a good place for Christmas tree lighting, and it wouldn't actually block anybody's view directly in or out of the front door. But there is room for the four trees. And the red maples are very nice trees, and the sugar maple is just a different kind of maple, so that we have a little... And we went with trees where the calipers would be a little bit bigger, because the trees are stronger, they're a few, a couple of years older, and they would be very much more resistant to wind blowing and things of that nature. We probably wouldn't have to go to the extra effort of staking the trees. And then, after planting, the road crew guys, if they're going to be in charge, can probably put grass seed down to fill in the blanks where all the dirt is now.
So, again, unless we heard any objections, that would be how we would move forward, but we just wanted to let you know, and I know Al takes great pride in his work, and we appreciate all that you do, mostly free of charge for ourselves.
Thank you. Well, the timeframe that we were looking at was also going to be any time from September 15th to September 30th, if you guys were all okay with that. All the trees will be bald and burlapped, so there's no actual timeframe of when you can plant.
Okay.
Couple concerns. One, we just had three sugar maples that died out there. I personally am not going to invoke in favor of having another sugar maple put there. One, I don't think it's a good place for them. We don't know what killed those other trees, if there's something, some disease or something in the ground, so I worry that if we plant another one there in a few years, it's going to die. Not against the red maples. My other concern is, with your Christmas tree, if it's going to block the view coming out of our driveway, you're not going to have a tree with limbs up where you can see under it. Maybe they're back far enough, so they won't, but I see some of the things that these businesses plant along the edge of the roadways, and you've got to be out in the road before you can see around them. So, that's a concern. I, I mean, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that needs to be taken into account.
I think there's enough room to, for that Christmas tree, to not be too far out to block, but we could also, you know, go out and take another finer look at it. As far as the sugar maples go, I agree with you. Sugar maples sometimes have difficulty surviving more than the red maples and other forms of trees. I personally voted down oaks, because their leaves are just terrible, and acorns, you don't want to go there. I have no problem if the town wanted to either put in three red maples, or choose two red maples, and another kind of tree that was totally different. I have no concern or problem, okay?
I'm just worried, we put it in there, it's going to die. Again, we don't know why. I would assume it's from the salt from the road has killed them, but we don't know.
However, by the size of the ones that just died...
They lived long time, yeah.
...very well for three decades, it could just be that they've matured out. I don't know either.
No, they last a lot longer than 30 years.
Okay.
The one on Rick's lawn's probably 200, so...
Ask a question. Is there proximity that these new trees would be planted to the road?
Oh, God, Hunter, let me...
I haven't taken any actual measurements.
You can see out front where the three that were taken out were removed.
We're talking like right over here in the park.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm not horticulturist, but I used to install, you know, a lot of, a lot of trees, and we give requests to plant them close to the road, depending on the road and the nature of the winter, when you're planting a tree, then the salt will kill them. That doesn't matter whether it's a maple, or a cedar, or a pine, or, you know, it really doesn't matter. So, if it's wind, if it's going to get salt spray, you plant it, and then it's going to have a bad winter before it gets established, then, then salt will kill, handily kill anything.
Of course, we do have a curb, but of course, plow, plow it over.
Plow guy's got to slow down.
That's not the first time you've heard that either.
I don't think the trees need to be in the center of that grass.
Not anymore.
We could move them further...
Further back this way.
Further toward the parking lot?
I think that would be a good idea.
The leaves, the crowns would be high enough, and the leaves would, you know, provide a little shade over those parking places, and the trunks would be further from the road.
Well, and then if you're going to plant your, we'll call it a Christmas tree, your evergreen tree, if it's back more, because, I mean, that's going to be green all the way to the bottom, it's literally going to block people's vision.
But for the Christmas tree, Dave, you're going to have to think about 20 years down the road, what the base of that tree is going to be width-wise, so that the bottom branches aren't into the parking lot.
Yeah.
Right, but also block, as it gets bigger, it's going to block more the view of the highway as you're pulling out of the roadway.
Possible.
The driveway, so, you know.
I'd rather see four red maples rather than the Christmas tree, they get so big. And they do.
Oh, they do, yeah. No, I, I would agree with you on that.
John and I are definitely open to anything. We, we didn't make any decisions, we just decided upon the Christmas tree over someone suggesting that it would look good with Christmas lights.
I did a red maple over there across the...
Too much, but can I speak to the Christmas tree just a little bit? Okay, pruning, pruning protocol would keep, would keep it from growing now.
As long as it gets pruned, yeah.
There would have to be a protocol for it.
That's what I understand.
And then you can turn it into a pool, or a triangle, or a square. That's all a control.
You've got several Christmas tree farmers in town as well.
Yeah, one's the chairman of the planning commission.
Yeah.
And he's not here.
Don't mean to throw monkey wrench into all of this, but it's several years ago, I supplied and helped plant down by the school, I don't know if it was four or five of some oaks. They're all still growing. But what I would feel good about doing, if somebody decided they wanted to take me up on it, is I've got a couple of different locations where you can pick out maple or oak, and even some hickory, and any size you want, from a little guy up to whatever. I don't happen to have a backhoe where they are located, so it would mean somebody had to bring a backhoe and scoop all up, but I'll give them the trees. I'd feel good about, if somebody wanted to take me up on the offer, I'd be glad to show anybody who wanted to look at them, but I got, I'm not going to say an endless amount, but I would come up with a hell of a bunch of them, if somebody wanted to look at, and they could add a machine to go dig them up. They could have them. Maybe that's... You're looking at me, but you know, you're the one who's planting them, if it's something you'd be interested in, I don't care, I'll give them to anybody.
How do you think those were transplant, with the roots being cut instead of balled?
That's a, that's always a hit or miss. Whenever you, whenever you cut roots on a tree, depending on how close you get to the actual trunk, you could kill the tree immediately. A backhoe, possibly, you know, very carefully.
One's down by the school, there's, by the ballpark, below the school, between the school and the firehouse, and they were all trees that I brought down. Maybe one wasn't Gary Salmon brought in, one that was some different variety, but that's just food for thought.
Well, like I said, my, my thing is helping the town get the pricing, and assisting the road crew guys to put them in the ground, volunteering. Where we get them is not, I'm not here to argue that point at all. If you want to try those trees, and it fails, well, then we'd be looking at a replanting of something else in the following season.
Take on something like that, bring a damn backhoe up and dig them up, but...
They're on your property, Joe?
They're on my property, and I can show you, and I can choose all you want, whoever wants to do it. Maybe that's not the way to go, I'm just...
Certainly a generous offer.
Yeah.
They die, they die.
Well, there's more, there's more time involvement and effort, you know, getting a backhoe and such, as opposed to having trees delivered. Like I said, it's a nice offer, it won't be my call.
Why don't you ask your crew if they feel like they have the skill set to...
To do that.
...cut out a tree with a reasonable chance of success?
Yeah, I actually couldn't answer that now, and Greg's knowledge, being a trees incorporated, I mean, yeah, his primary job was trimming and cutting, but he's knowledgeable as well as planting.
Maybe you and, and Orstir Willberge could flag some specimens or something, Joe, Daniel?
I'm sure, sure anybody wants to look at them more there, I think, Alfred Joe.
Well, I guess the, you run the risk of cutting the roots when you're doing them, but on the other hand, they haven't been out of the ground, sitting in a verlaine bag all summer either, so, you know, they're fresh dug, with, you know, they'll be dug, and within an hour, they'll be back in the ground again, so there should be some increased survival chances with that, too, so...
Like I said, anything is worth a try. If they die, then we just have to come up with Plan B on the following year.
Yeah.
I've transplanted quite a few over the years, and usually you can get a good bunch of dirt, but the roots, they take right off.
Yeah.
If you shake them up, lose all the dirt, forget it.
Well, because you lose all the little tiny roots. You get the root.
Right. Well, then, if that, if that's the case, then my suggestion, as a landscaper, would be that we'd want to wait until the dormant season, because to try to transplant trees during the leaf season is not a good thing.
Especially this time.
So, we would want to wait for the leaves to be off the trees, but we'd want to look at them now, while they got leaves on them, and pick them, but then not dig them, probably until like early, like first or second week of October.
And would it make sense to have holes pre-dug, or just wait till...
Oh, Chad could dig a hole in 10 minutes, that's not the big deal. I think the big deal is getting the, the right truck that could maybe bring all four trees at the same time.
I could probably arrange for the transportation, but I just don't have a backhoe at home where I could, where they are, right?
Then that would be up between John and Chad, and I can, I can volunteer to be there and help however I can.
That'd be perfect.
Perfect, yeah.
We'll slow that way.
Just one last thing.
Yeah.
I think the reason why there was that gap is that dry well that's out there.
There is a dry well out there, that's right.
That's in between the trees, that's why there's only three trees and not four.
Yeah, that's why there is.
We should stick with three. They're of a certain size, anyway.
Just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
I did a little dry well, so...
There's three young trees.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to call the nursery then, and I'm going to have them take the tags off the trees that they tagged for me, and tell them that we're going to try this one first, and if not, we'll see them again, maybe, down the road.
Yep.
Okay, good enough.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, my only question is, someone would need to get ahold of me to get together with Chad and Joe at the same time, and maybe Greg, and we'll go out and have a cold beer and a walk.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, good.
Greg will be...
And Greg will be bringing the beer, right? Go make Greg bring the beer.
Yes, he won't share.
Crowd in the pensive way, they ought to go anyway.
All right, so everyone else is here for bridge replacement, correct, or missed anybody on the agenda? Okay, well, then that's, that's up.
With the exception of VLCT, are they here over the phone? Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that's him. He's on audio. So Rick will have to understand that we're gonna have a bridge discussion and then we'll get to VLCT after that.
It sounds good.
Okay, thanks, Rick. So we have Carolyn Coda here, Alicia, and she asked for an opportunity to give the select board an update on her work to design the bridge near the mobile station. I think everybody's got their hand out.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna try a couple things. Would've brought the power plant projector. That would've been a trip to the.
Only if you brought that, our thing would be working.
Yeah.
I know, so Murphy's Law. So does literally, everyone have a copy here?
We all have a copy.
Do you have copies for everything?
We have all copies.
See, that was the, see, you made too many copies.
We talked about belts and suspenders.
That became a natty. Okay, so if that's the case, I'm actually going to. I'll set up.
You can have a copy if you'd like one for yourself.
Oh. So if that's the case, I'm gonna steal a chair. Can I steal this chair? And I'll just sit here, pretend I'm looking.
Yes.
I see it right there. So, welcome. I was here actually, probably a month before COVID hit. Here, so, thank you for having me back. One of the reasons I am here is because I thought it was time to, two reasons, time to kind of give you an update. And I've been working with Mr. Conway, trying to resolve some of his concerns with the project, so we thought it'd be great to come and just give the, give the town a little update because it's coming. You've got one project almost done and getting into another one. I think there's an up paved project, paving project that's gonna be happening right where my project ends, a couple miles, that's gonna happen. Excited stuff here in this town.
Do you know when that's gonna happen?
Oh, that's very good.
We're gonna ask Butch Shaw, maybe later, he'll tell us.
It's Nick Babus was working on the project, I'm not sure. I don't know.
Okay.
I should've checked. So, so welcome. I think we all know what bridge we're talking about. I'm Carolyn Coda. That's the second page of my presentation. Project manager for the project. I've been with the agency now for thirty-five years and project manager for the past twelve years. And so, pretty knowledgeable, but if you live, I'm actually the project manager right now for the project that's going on in Proctor over the railroad, which is going on lately. So I've actually been around town all day. So the purpose is to provide the overview of the project, just to get people back up to speed. I wanna discuss how we arrived at our final design, how we got to where we're at, a little bit about the maintenance of traffic, how we're gonna maintain traffic during construction, and an opportunity for people to ask questions. So, next picture is of the location. And just a reminder, this bridge, the existing bridge is a two-span structure and it was constructed in about nineteen thirty-one and the water line's attached to it. So just again, this next slide is we're looking north over the bridge and the next one we're looking south over the bridge, gives us an idea of the width, the island, the mobile station, and the V. And again, one of the things that's affected the project is water line, which is attached and that's being updated, replaced, et cetera. So, right now we have our final plans done. What the next few slides shows what we've designed, where we're at. Couple minor changes since, just, actually, I think I may not have, I don't remember what I mentioned at the last meeting I was at, but as we know, it's gonna be an eighty-four foot single-span bridge, we're widening it to meet Vermont State standards. The final plan removes the slip lane by eliminating the island. And one of the things that we did do is we extended the project south. So this bridge was originally part of segment two of the Pittsburgh-Brandon legacy project.
Road break construction.
Legacy project, road break construction. And the bridge was pulled out of segment two because of the concerns over its structural stability. It's failing. And so they pulled that out and we were just gonna do the bridge, but there was like this couple hundred feet that wasn't gonna get touched, so we're gonna have all of segment one done and my bridge project. And then the other little portion was gonna get done with the segment two. And so I said, that's plain silly, we'll just bring it up to where they're stopping. So my project, basically where the construction's stopping right now, our project will go up to that point. It doesn't, didn't require any right-of-way or anything like that, it just made a lot of sense. And we also reconfigured a little bit of the Oxbow Road. Originally, they were gonna bring the Oxbow Road closer to the river, this was the consultant, which would've required like this like two-hundred-foot wall, you know, it was just, I'm like, yeah. So we just, we kind of redid it and we got that all taken care of. So that's a little bit different than what you would've originally seen back in two thousand fifteen. So, this slide, on the slide that says "bridge typical", so I think this is important. So this is what the new bridge is technically gonna look like. We are, the distance between each rail is gonna be fifty-six feet. We're gonna have, looking, we go from the west to the east. You're gonna have the one-foot bridge rail, an eight-foot shoulder. There's gonna be an eleven-foot lane, which is gonna be a turning lane that's gonna go onto Route Three, Vermont Three. Another eleven-foot travel lane, which is the traffic heading south on seven. Then the north, another lane, eleven-foot wide with, for the vehicles traveling north, a seven-foot shoulder, and then a six-foot sidewalk and your bridge railing. So you're gonna have two shoulders, one eight, one seven, which for bicyclists, et cetera. And so that's, and then the water line is gonna be attached to the girder on the far east and kind of tucked underneath the sidewalk. And the next slide is a kind of, and you've seen this before, it just kind of shows what that new curb's gonna look like. For instance, there's a water line next to that curb and it will be up, your water line will be up tighter to the sidewalk. So, this is the final plan layout. So we're traveling from south to north and this slide is showing it, you can see up in the right-hand corners is the mobile station, just to give you an idea of where you're at. And there's two lanes that will go up, go south, and then the one lane going north. And then the next one is, what this one, I thought this was a good one because it shows.
The final plan layout?
The final plan layout, sheet number two, it shows the bridge and it shows all the striping and what things are gonna look like. You can see that if you're traveling, so when you're over by Arch Street, so basically where my, over in the Arch Street area is where segment two is gonna start. So we have to match back into that, into the narrow two lanes. And as you're traveling from north to south, you can see that the lane comes down and then there's the one lane and then it's gonna go into two lanes. One where traffic will turn right onto Vermont Three and one where traffic will either turn left onto Oxbow Road or go straight up the hill. If you're traveling north, you've got the one lane that's just gonna go down through. And then if you look at Vermont Three, you can see where Vermont Three intersects with US Seven. There's gonna be like a, oops. There is, it looks like a bunch of like little bricks or something. That's gonna be a special, it's called like a truck ramp, so when trucks are going over, they can drive over that and go around the radius. It's designed to have vehicles go on that. And then on the mobile station side, we're just gonna have some white stripes there and you can see these little dots, those are, this slide shows the delineators that Mr. Conway and I had discussion about. They'll probably get reduced a little bit or maybe at the end of the day, they're not gonna be put in there at all. So that's what those little dots are. And so that's kind of what that's gonna look like at the end of the day. When everything is said and done, it's gonna look like that.
Can you take a question now or do you wanna wait till the end?
Oh, since I'm not zooming, I can take questions now.
All right, I'm just, I'm an innocent bystander myself, but it looks like the Route Three road looks to be further north than where Oxbow Road comes into Route Seven.
Correct.
Which means that if you're gonna go from Oxbow to Route Three, it isn't really gonna be a straight across, it's gonna be an angle. Is that gonna be an issue?
It shouldn't be an issue. It's designed, there's enough space, if you're going, I'm just looking at like, if I'm parked, if I'm at the stop, the four stop letters on Oxbow Road, I can just kind of like, kind of go straight across. It's not a perfect straight, it's a little bit of a diagonal, but it shouldn't be an issue. And the same thing with the traffic coming from Vermont Three across to Oxbow. It's designed to, it's been designed to take that cross-traffic. It shouldn't be an issue. It's, I think it's a little, it's definitely a little bit offset, but it was, it's, right now it's almost a perfect crossing, but I'm not sure it's exactly perfect as far as a perpendicular, what's existing now.
Is, by moving Route Three, it looks to be a little bit further north?
Yeah, it is.
Does that, so that's good for Mr. Conway's mobile station because is that gonna be further north than it is now?
Yes, it is and that's with the elimination of the island.
Okay.
Of the Green Island. And it does move the travelers further away from where it is now. But people are gonna, people are probably, even though it's striped, so people are not supposed to drive over it, but I bet like fifty percent of us sometimes don't follow all the guidance we have on the roads with stripes, you know. You see intersections where it says, "Don't, don't stop here," and people still stop in those, so. But if they don't drive on that, then they're further away, so it's a better situation. That's your angle up?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to let people ask questions because we've had a lot of conversations, but just on a follow-up to his, Carol, the distance is gonna be longer because they're gonna have to traverse three lanes. And as this gentleman's pointed out, it's not gonna be straight, it's gonna be a diagonal. Currently, they're only crossing two lanes.
Right, right.
So, that's it.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, I should've mentioned that as well, you are absolutely correct. It is going to be different, there's gonna be three lanes.
I live here in town, have all my life, I happen to have a tractor-trailer. We have a sawmill on the other end of town. I run up to a forty-eight-foot spread axle trailer. For me to come down seven and get around that corner onto Three, which is where I have to go most of the time, if there happens to be a car on Route Three that is waiting to get out onto Seven, I'm gonna have to go into the northbound lane in order to get around that corner and chances are the trailer wheels will still run over your
You're supposed to go over that.
Your truck wheel ramp.
Right, so you're supposed to.
So that, wait a minute, so that means for me to make that route change, I'm gonna have to cut my speed down to very, very slow. That means that anybody following me, let's say it's another big truck or a car, there's snow on the road, I'm gonna bring them to almost a stop and they're faced with the hill with absolutely no momentum. Couple of questions I'd like to have you answer if you can. Why don't they leave it just the way it is?
Thank you.
Is there been a significant amount of accidents that's causing for this redesign? Or has there not been a lot of accidents?
So, we'll get to that in a little bit, in the next few slides, but part of the issue is constructability, maintaining traffic during construction of the project, and there were safety concerns. I mean, a lot of slip lanes are, have been eliminated on a lot of roads that have been constructed, even ones that were on interstate. They're eliminating, you know, slip lanes due to safety concerns and safety issues. So just as a reminder, I was not the project manager at the beginning of the project and a lot of these changes occurred during, when I was not involved. But I do know that when you see a few more slides, that there is a huge constructability issue with this project, as well as maintaining, we have to maintain two lanes of traffic, one in each direction at all times. It's very difficult to do when you have a bridge project. Because a bridge project, it's not like you can, like they did on segment one, where they can build, widen the roads on either side and push two lanes of traffic to one side, build two lanes and then vice versa. You can do that on a bridge, but you're still limited with what you have. And what's there now is really not conducive to the way we construct bridges at this point. So let me just, I'll show a few more slides and we'll get back into it. I totally understand all my conversations I've had with Mr. Conway as well regarding this slip lane. We, you know, we discussed it. I don't have printouts necessarily of the turning movements for different trucks and vehicles, but they can make this turn. It's, the design of that intersection's designed so tractor-trailer trucks can make that turn and go over that little lip, it's like a roundabout.
These little stones here.
Right.
So when you have a roundabout, the trucks, it's designed so trucks can go on top of that and go around and that's what this is also, this is designed to do.
One thing you're not mentioning, to run over that so-called, I call it a little island.
Yep.
Your speed is gonna have to be reduced
Wow.
Very much, a whole lot, from what it would be as it is today.
Right.
So that means you're slowing down the whole flow of traffic. You're creating a situation, especially in the wintertime, of causing problems for people to get up the hill if this happens to be in a snowstorm. You're also causing a big safety issue that I may have to get the front end of my truck over into the northbound lane in order to swing. over into the northbound lane in order to swing that corner. Have them, if there's been a lot of accidents, I can see why you'd wanna try to change it and make it better. But I, in my mind, I think that it's the safest and the best pattern right today. Yes, it could be a little wider on that slip lane, but there is room for some improvements. But I think you're throwing away the most important safety factor by putting this here the way you're doing it. Because I'm, anybody, even a car going onto that Route Three is gonna have to slow down much slower, they're gonna have to bring all the traffic, even though they don't run over that island, or whatever you wanna call it, they're gonna have to bring the traffic to a much slower speed. And when you slow the traffic down, you're only creating a problem. I mean, assuming they're going the speed limit, if they're over the speed limit, that's another story.
So in this particular case, I, you won't have to go into the northbound lane to make that turn, you'll have to probably go into the other lane that's going south, if, in case, cause it's two lanes there now. And plus, you've got that extra shoulder width, so you've got quite a bit of room to make that, make that turn.
With a car that is sitting on the Route Three, waiting
Right.
To get out on Three, you're saying I can still make that?
With going, with the design, with the intent of going over that, that little island, yes. You should be able to. I've got, I don't have them with me, I might have them here, but, but I will, I will, um, take this back and, and have them, put a car there, you said it was a 48?
It's just a, it's just a 48 spread axle. Now, a spread axle trailer, it takes me as much room to get around a corner with a spread axle trailer as probably a 53 footer.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
If not 53 feet long.
But it's just because of the
But it's just the, the axle configuration.
Are you saying as well as that he wouldn't have to cut out into the straight lane as well, on the southbound in order to get around that corner?
To go southbound, I think he has more room with the shoulder, with that additional shoulder, to make that right-hand turn about.
I know, but are you saying he wouldn't have to cut out into the straight, southbound lane into Route Seven?
No, she just said he would have to.
He might have, no, he might, he might have to, but I'm not, I'm not saying, because what you're gonna realize is that that's 11 feet plus eight feet, that's a 19-foot lane width you actually have with your shoulder.
But that would be taking the straight lane, that would be taking both southbound lanes.
That wouldn't be taken, if he were to use the shoulder.
The bike lane.
If it's, right.
Well, and there's
It's not marked, it is not being marked as a bike lane, it's not being marked, you, so it's, it's hard to, if I could
Bike lanes.
There are bicyclists on this.
You've got pictures here with bike lanes.
That is the original. I mean, that's back in
Okay, so that's the original had bike lanes. Okay, well, well, okay.
Yeah, I haven't gotten through that. What I'm saying is that they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be, you know, if you go up to Burlington and you go into Rutland or any of these places where there's official bike lanes, they're painted green.
No.
It's not happening here.
So, um, I just, sorry to press on, but, um, so if the straight lane as proposed, uh, heading south is, if a truck has to come into it, then that's, that's a traffic accident risk that doesn't exist now, because the way it is now, if you're a truck, you don't have to.
If you're heading south.
Yeah.
But what happens if you're heading north?
If you're heading, if you're heading north, then you just go straight.
No, heading north, let's say you're a truck and you wanna make a left-hand turn onto Vermont Three.
If you're a truck and you wanna make a left-hand turn onto Vermont Three, there's a whole other lane on the other side of the green where you just come down and take a left onto, across the mark station.
Right.
Yeah, that doesn't, it doesn't play.
Well, but if you were to look at
They only have to, they only have, if you're a truck, if you're a truck heading north on Route Seventy, you wanna take a left on the street and west. Is that what you're saying? You would only have to cross
One lane, right, right, right.
And with the new project, it would be two lanes.
No, they're gonna have to go over two lanes, yeah. That's gonna happen no matter what.
Right, or it's a straight on the outside lane, and the inside lane is a left or a straight. So you'd have to navigate both oncoming lanes in order to pick a left for your truck. But as a truck driver, I'd like to do it, just crossing one lane.
Right, and I think that if you're traveling from the north to the south and you're going, you go into your lane to make the right-hand turn, and, you know, you're gonna, as a, as a driver, doesn't matter whether you're a truck driver or a driver, when something gets changed, you have to rethink how you do things. Whether, you know, you used to be able to cut this way, or you did this, you're gonna be, you're gonna, you have new markings, so you're gonna try and stay in the markings. But if you have an eight-foot shoulder, it's no different what people do today, especially in some of these back roads that are not striped. They may have 15 foot and they don't have a white line. And they have to make a right-hand turn, they're gonna go however they need to go, they're gonna use that extra space, move over it, and then make that turn.
You probably don't have 10,000 vehicles going down a dirt road a day like
Right, I'm not talking about dirt roads, I'm not talking, I'm talking about, I live up in Essex, come on. I'm not, you know, I, I live in the city, if you wanna call that, Chitting County City, but, I mean, I, I understand the truck movement, I, I watch the trucks, I stay away when they're making the turn, I, you know, I slow down, I do my thing. I'm going to try and, um, maybe you brought something to chat to.
We're still working on it, I got so many.
Um, so the next, so let's continue on and we'll get back to that topic. So the next picture is, how did we get there, right? How did we get there? So back in 2015, the slip lane was there. And I just want, I just wanna share that, when we first came here, we had that slip lane in there, I, I know. And, um, it was, it was wider and the lane widths varied. Um, so I just wanted to share that, and they did show bicyclists, and the, and the, there was one shoulder that was 10 feet wide, one that was six foot, and your travel lanes varied because it was going into that slip lane, um, thing. And then if you go to the next slide, it kinda gave you an idea of what that was gonna look like. They were going to replace the bridge, have the two lanes on the bridge going up, going south and north, and then have the slip lane. So after they developed the preliminary plans, something changed, and they decided to eliminate that slip lane. So there were constructability issues, traffic maintenance issues, and safety issues. So if we go to this picture that says final bridge layout, in 2017, um, Doug Beno and John Byatt, President O'Neill, um, came and gave a presentation on November, in November of 2017, to the community. And this slide is from that presentation. And you can see that they had eliminated the slip lane. It was gone, they had the, the white lines, um, on Route Three was like that turning movement, and they had one lane, two lanes going south, one lane going north with those shoulders. And so with the elimination of the island. And so we brought this to the select board's attention back in 2017.
May I?
You may, you may.
Thank you. Also on that, and Joe was here, Tom and Hank, I presented information regarding the fact that we had historic issues down there, and that had, and now that has been disregarded. However, that's from this, from this current plan. It wasn't in the beginning, and we do have all the maps, and we contacted Historic Preservation, which is, if this goes to Act 250, at that point, we'll weigh in. Is there significant historic, you know, all these photos don't show anything downstream of the bridge. There's millstones on the bank, there's remnants of the dam, and there's also, um, one other thing, oh, foundation somewhere the drift mill were. They, they've moved the power lines already and it cut everything. So it's very visible now. But during the, if you remember, you were involved with us during the 1797 survey, um, the surveyor for the state, Ron Doherty, was the one that pointed out the millstones and the foundations and the remnants, because that was used as a monumentation to ascertain the particulars of the right-of-way. And I could want a little bit longer, there was also a, um, order from the court that came down, and the boundaries were defined. And just one other thing that I wanted to mention real quick, Carol talked about segments. And Carol's been, by, by the way, Carol's been very good with us, she's been very good to work with. We're on disagreement on some of the things, but, um, I'd like to just bring us back full circle.
Yeah.
Originally, we were in segment one.
Yeah.
Then they moved us to segment two.
Two, that's right.
Then they took the bridge project out of segment two and put its own project, and then in 2015, we were good with the bridge. Now make sure, that Carol, you'll hear me for the 100th time, we want the new bridge.
Yeah.
It had a design for 2015, okay? And it works. And I, and you got into the compatibility issues and compatibility with the town plan. But what I'm trying to say is that we had a plan in 2015, which, which worked.
Yeah.
And what Joe's talking about, and there's bike lanes, they may not be defined as bike lanes, but as this has gone on further, we've had some preliminary consultations with a highway engineer in Burlington, and there's serious concerns with, with right-turn lanes and bike lanes.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, because you're turning with a truck
You don't see the bike.
You don't see the bike. And the other thing, I'm kinda losing track here, but the current road design funnels all the traffic away from the mobile station. Okay, so you go this way, you go southeast and you go southwest. If you're sitting there right now where you're set to come north, you're gonna be a sitting duck. Right now, there's a green area that provides tremendous buffer. We haven't got a lot of truck traffic, and Carol's not from around here, but we've told her, 'cause from Amiens, that's where all the carrier trucks.
Yeah.
You know, and when Randy Adams had the accident down there, you guys all know, I ran the director business in town for, for a lot of years, that's when the state finally put the yield signs up on the, on the poles, because alls it did was say yield in the road. Back when Dad had the mobile station, it was a stop sign.
Stop sign.
That didn't really work. And one other thing, he's not represented yet, but we always call him the singing Brooke En, I think his name is Koopman, or Boombas, right across from the mobile. Currently, his driveway is right there. The way it's set up right now, the traffic that's coming through the slip lane has to, is, has to yield.
Yield.
So he's got some yielding there. He's not gonna have that under this condition, he's just gonna be
Sitting duck.
Sitting duck, you know, no choice about it. And with regards to the slip lanes, and I probably don't shut up, there's a slip lane at the other end of Route Three in Center Island. If you're, if you were coming back from the Center Island snack bar and you wanna come home
On Route Three.
On Route Three?
Yeah.
You come right in, okay?
Yeah, works good.
If you get into Proctor, which I think this lady had something to do with the design down there, they've got some nice lights, they've got a nice Green Island with flowers
I didn't do the Green Island, I did the lights on the bridge.
I'm gonna beat her. They're probably, Sandy and I are gonna have to take her and her husband to dinner. Seriously, you know, there's, the way you come on Route Three in Proctor, you've got to stop and that traffic comes through. And we went to Maine, took a little time off, and we're riding down the road, and Sandy says, "What difference?" She says, "Well, what difference is an entrance ramp onto the interstate, or an exit, any different than a slip lane?"
It isn't.
The same thing.
It isn't. Some of them are slip lanes, yeah.
Yeah, so somebody up there, way up, maybe we're gonna have to go back to Montpelier and talk to the governor, but I don't really wanna do that. We did do that with the right-of-way. Um, you know, this is Pittsburgh, it's, it's part of the character of the area, and I, I really don't wanna see it changed, because I don't wanna see somebody get killed down there.
And you know, this is, again, we were talking about how far people are gonna have to go to get from Route Three over to Oxbow. Yesterday, I went, came down, was going south on Seven, and I looked, and on Route Three, the traffic was back out to the hill, trying to get out. And, so they're already waiting, waiting, they only have to cross two lanes now, they're, they're not gonna have this extra lane. And then I have a story to tell, a true story, non-diction. Guy came in, the traffic got backed up, there was a tractor-trailer, and he had a little car in front of him, and he couldn't get, they couldn't get out, they couldn't get out, they couldn't get out, they couldn't get out. They were there for I don't know how long, and they were there so long, this tractor-trailer driver could thought that that little car was in front of him. And when he finally got a pass, I wish that car would have I mean, that's obviously driver error, but that's how long people are already waiting there. I just can't envision them having, they're just not that patient, I don't think. That's just my, just an observation I made yesterday.
If I can say something, we love all of you. Adam's already stuns off Oxbow, so I go from Oxbow side, have to cross both lines, go to Route Three, go as a family.
Okay, yeah.
That's a very difficult intersection, and I lived in Chicago where there's serious traffic, traffic there didn't scare me as much, it's trucks coming down that hill doing 55 miles an hour, it's snowy, it's wet, you don't know if you're gonna have traction, there's always gravel right by that stop sign. You don't know if you're gonna make it or not. It's four-wheel drive, I have to go in four-wheel drive to get through that intersection in the winter. It's a very scary intersection, it really is. If you're coming from the other way, you can't maintain your speed across to get through traffic, cause there's a dip in the road, you have to slow down.
Well, get rid of that dip. The, you're saying from going from Three over to Oxbow?
Yeah, from Three over to Oxbow, yeah, there's a, there's a bad dip, so, well, if that's getting cured, that's one good thing, but ma'am, I would, I would ask you a favor, if you wouldn't mind, one night between four and five o'clock, try to get from Oxbow across to Route Three.
Well, I was, um, I actually observed a little bit today, um, it was probably around five, and I, I could see a little, about four or five cars, but I got one, they were three-side, but they did seem to go through, but I wasn't, I couldn't see
Yeah.
Um, if they were going, I could see if they were going left, I couldn't see if they were going straight. I was eating my, my dinner, so, um...
I guess in all, and this is a different concern than what's been brought up here, but it's still a concern, you've now got, gonna have your left turn lane, okay? So you're in your, either straight ahead, or, excuse me, right turn lane. I don't know my left from my right sometimes. You're gonna have your right turn lane, you're gonna have your straight or left turn lane.
Which is what you have now.
Which is what we have now, right, but just one lane. So there's less distractions, because the cars turning to the right are just disappearing. You're gonna have a big truck, or whatever it is, making the turn onto Route Three, you're coming around, you're focusing your attention on this big truck as you're passing it, and suddenly the car in front of you decides it's making a left onto Oxbow. And it's just that distraction, I'm afraid you're gonna have people rear-ending each other, because they aren't gonna be paying attention to the car in front of them, that the vehicle that they're passing is gonna be taking their attention away from them, cause they're gonna be watching the truck try to wiggle its way around the corner, and this car is gonna be making a left onto Oxbow, and bam.
So do you find, if you're going north, and it's one lane, you have cars taking a right onto Oxbow, you might have cars taking a left onto Vermont Three, it's the same sort of situation where they, and they're coming down the hill?
How come, but you're gonna be distracted by a vehicle that you're passing? Because if, like Joe says, he's gonna have to start to encroach over into that straight left-hand turn lane in order to make that corner. So you're, this truck, as you're going by it, is coming over towards you, you're gonna be watching that, you're not gonna be watching the car in front of you that may be taking a left-hand turn and forgot to put their blinker on.
I, I've got an issue that nobody's mentioned here yet.
Really?
Emergency services, fire trucks. We come out of the Arch Street, that's where we come on Seven, going to Proctor, we go to Rowan, Rowan City, Rowan, wherever, that's gonna be a cluster for us, not having that slip lane going on Route Three. Cause now, you've gotta slow way down, you either gotta go around traffic, if you got people sitting in those other lanes, now you gotta go in the opposite lane to get back onto Route Three, that's a hell of a lot more dangerous than what it is now, in my opinion. Especially with a, oh, an 80-foot ladder truck and, and pumpers, now you've slowed us way down to make the hill, it's bad enough we, we'd have to slow down anyways, but now you're gonna be at a crawling speed
Right, to get on.
To get going, especially in the wintertime when the roads are snowy, not a good situation. I was chief for 32 years, so I, I've seen many times we go that way.
Well, and the other thing is, you're coming out and you're gonna be in that right turn lane
Exactly.
And you've gotta get over into that other lane.
Now you gotta blow it, yeah, exactly. And if you've got cars stopped there, they hear you coming with the sirens, the people anchor it, now, now you're fighting two lanes of traffic instead of one. the people anchor it, now, now you're fighting two lanes of traffic instead of one.
Now, just for the record, I did speak, I assumed Tommy was speaking for the fire department. I did speak with the fire chief.
I know what his feelings are too, yeah.
And I'm not speaking for the fire department, but he said, to say that he did not think that it was a good idea, that he had concerns with handling the emergency vehicles, because when you make that turn, especially the water, with water tankers and stuff, that's a lot of weight. If you've got people trying to get a pull over, right now, it's straight through.
That's a straight shot.
That was Bill's comment.
Well, mine too, so.
Bill Hamble.
He's the fire chief now, the current one.
Yes. Oh, you, you had a question first.
Sorry, jumped ahead of you.
Yeah, you did.
So I have, uh, three questions, I guess maybe you could answer. Definitely the Oxbow entrance onto Route 7. I noticed in the 2015, the 2017, it's a 90-degree or perpendicular to Route 7. But the new design is a curved design.
Yeah, sorry, just shut off my computer.
Yeah, and I thought we were doing away with that on the end of this road, Plains Road, right? We're doing away with all curved onto Route 7. And I noticed, I mean, when I look at the drawing, it shows that it's a curved.
So...
So you're not making a 90-degree turn out onto Route 7, when you enter Route 7. If you look at the final plan layout.
Right.
It curves towards the north.
Yeah.
It arcs towards the north. Now, if you look at the 2015 proposed layout, it's a 90-degree. And then, the 2000s, or the 2017 in November, it's a 90-degree. Why was that changed when we're trying to get away from those, from what I hear?
Well, I'm not, who, who is telling you that you're getting away from that on Plains Road? Is that something that the?
The state, right? The, right? BTRM made us do that, yeah. We did it on Arch, on Adams Road going onto Oxbow, had to be done too, right?
Didn't happen.
That happened on Town Road, so that's it.
All right, so I didn't know, I didn't, it happened, so I assumed it was happening everywhere.
Um, so, so I can like, I mean, I think that, as far as Plains Road, so that is the Dollar General, I was wondering what that was being built. So they're making that, so you're gonna make that, that's gonna be like a T-intersection.
Yeah.
So this is technically a T-intersection, it's just not, it's showing that the center line is kind of going across, but if I were to put a little curve in that, it would be a T-intersection. Vermont 3 is definitely a T-intersection with Vermont 7. And the Oxbow Road is also technically be a T-intersection, I just have to change that real line, but then it's not like an opposite, so that's why it's kind of curved to the right, so that it is kind of opposite each other.
Right.
If I made that a T-intersection, it's definitely going to be opposite one another. That's why that's that way.
So.
By, by the way, the state does like to see T-intersections.
Oh, okay, that was just one, I got two more.
Oh, so another one, huh?
Oh, yeah, I got two more, that, I got two more here. Uh, you brought up the, uh, concern with heading north, coming down the hill, um, and turning onto Oxbow.
That's not it.
How come we didn't put a turning lane there?
It didn't warrant it, not enough traffic. I know that they, I know that that was studied.
It's not the same traffic going both ways? There's more traffic that goes south than there are that would goes north? And the reason why I ask that, because I personally have been in a car accident right there, turning onto Oxbow Road.
So that was all part of, that's not even all been part of.
That's a very common.
Original segment one, part of the, the whole segment. So that part of the traffic, um, that would have been something that would have been developed as part of segment one, and it was never part of the segment two. We look, I, I think, basically, the traffic data is not, and traffic data changes every year, you know? If you were to do traffic counts last summer, it'd be like almost nil, because no one was going to work, right? You know, so depending on when traffic studies were done, I'm not saying that that's when, I'm just saying that traffic studies vary from year to year, just based on what's happening. So, based on the traffic data from, that they had at the time of evaluating that intersection, because this intersection, the other thing, I mean, you know, no one wants it, because it's not safe, but what could happen here, and what might happen here in the future, is that it's gonna be a four-way intersection with lights, right? It doesn't, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, it doesn't warrant it, that's why it's not happened? And because of the hills, it's not as safe, but there are people out there that, that look at that and think it should be a four-way intersection, so we're trying to do our best not to happen.
There's no doubt that you're dealing with a very difficult project.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an easy, uh, and we haven't even gotten into how, how you guys are gonna be impacted when, when it's under construction.
Probably, and you must have figures on this, but I'm gonna say, 75% of the traffic is on Route 7, not 3 and Oxbow Road.
Right.
Maybe even a higher percentage. So.
Yeah.
The main traffic is 7, absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, that's why it's not warranting a, a light at this point.
And the way it is right now, with that little island in there, a car that is coming north on 7, wanting to go south on 3, one, possibly two cars, can come across, and if somebody is coming down 7, and going right on, going south on 7, and heading right onto 3, it gives them a place where they can hold up if they so desire, till that southbound vehicle gets by them. As it is right now, who has the right of way there, right? The, the southbound on 7, or the guy coming off of 7, making that circle to go south?
I think the guy making the left.
There's a yield sign there.
The guy making the left.
The yield sign is for you when you're going to your mill.
Right. So I hope you're yielding.
Well.
He travels at 1:00 in the morning. I've seen him. No, not really.
Many times, if I go down, I'm down off, going north on 3, and I get down to the end of 3, and I'm way over on the right-hand side, which I need to be, and I want to go left onto 7.
Right.
It'd take, I'd take up the whole damn road to give it around and head up 7, without going up on the sidewalk on the bridge. It takes just, it, it takes about all the space there is available.
Right.
I don't know if the bridge is gonna wind up with a little wider, I hope it would be nice if the bridge had a little wider surface on the south end of it anyway, I'm not sure how they're, how they, than what it is today, but that would alleviate that, that tightness there.
Well, the 2015 plan was a wider bridge, that was one of the things that was brought up at the regional concerns meeting. Chuck had another question.
Yeah, sorry about that, that's my third and last one, I'll...
You can have more.
So, no, that's fine, um, the biggest thing is, is that we all know that designs are great, but we know in real-world applications, sometimes they don't work as well as we hope. So I guess my recommendation is, is to be there between 7 and 8 o'clock on Oxbow, and try to cross over to Route 3.
Is this AM?
AM. And I, I'll guarantee you, when you make that, you won't want another lane there, especially if you're hauling a 25-foot trailer behind you. You're gonna be, you know, I know you said that we might get a traffic light, but...
No, I'm, I just, I'm talking like 30 years from now.
Right, right, but I'm just saying that, I pull out of there a lot, and it's one of those situations where if you had the third lane, it's not gonna be good. You know, even now, it's not. To pull out and go up the hill is, is enough. And not even talking winter weather, I'm not even mentioning if there's any amount of winter. This is just regular summertime, when people are going to work. It's a common knowledge that there's the extra passing lane there, when you round the corner and you get on the bridge, your right foot, just for some reason, settles a little bit more to make the hill when you're headed south, so you come around that corner a little bit quicker than normal. And we're all guilty of that.
Trying to save fuel.
Yeah.
If I could, just as a follow-up, and then I'd like to let Mike speak.
Yeah.
Carol, you and I talked a little bit about this, but right now, on the final plan layout, we're showing the right turn lane, and then the straight through and right, left turn lane to go Oxbow. There, the way this is drawn, there's two lanes that are gonna be going along the mobile station frontage, along Route 7. Currently, there's one. My suggestion would be to do this, and I can just get you to look at this, if there's some way that you can slide these intersections closer together to align them, and, and instead of adding a lane over here, put a turn lane for Oxbow Road, because there's a lot of houses that have been built up in there, there's a lot of development. And, because you're not, when we were talking about this originally, before you, when we first discussed it, there were two southbound lanes, left or right turn. Then, this proposal that's shown on final plan layout, is still, if you look at it, it's gonna, there's still gonna be two lanes going by the mobile station, there's currently one. And I'd, I'd like to kind of see it that way, because once you get south of the mobile station where the two lanes are, that's when it becomes victory lane, down the hill, you know, and people gotta get a run. And Joel Gonya brought up a good point, you've got, you gotta slow down, traffic can't take off and get going up that hill. Tommy Hooker's talked about it, you gotta stop, slow down to go around, you're not gonna make that hill, and those roads are really pitched, and I, and I'll yield my time now to Mike.
I'll be, I'll be very brief, but I just wanted to make a few more quick observations. In the spirit of pulling out on the Route 7, I think one, one, uh, combination of turns that we haven't talked about is if you're on Route 3, and you want to go north onto Route 7. And I'm not gonna beat, I'm not trying to beat my chest here, but I drive in excess of 30,000 miles, moving Chittany County, I've driven in every state in this country, I've driven in Paris, I've driven in Bangkok, in Shanghai. And it's very difficult to navigate left-hand turn, crossing multiple lanes. So typically, you'd have that in, say, an access junction, where there would be lights, you know, say, Route 15 or Pearl Street. Here we are, out on Route 7, in a very rural area, and you're in precarious situation of having to come to a stop sign, stop, and as it is now, which I, I agree, I don't know why it has to change, honestly, but, so, as it is now, you only have to navigate to cross one lane of flow of traffic of Route 7. With the proposed plan, there'd be, because it opens up over by the church, and starts to be two lanes. So if I'm on Route 3, and I'm trying to get north, I've gotta look across, navigate across two lanes of traffic on Route 7, to make that left-hand turn and go north. Right now, I only have to navigate one. I'm not seeing where that's safe. It's safer to have two lanes of traffic. In Chittany County, you'd have a light, you'd have a left green arrow, you'd safely cross those two lanes. I don't think, I can't think of an area in Chittany County or Burlington where you do that on a stop sign, navigating two lanes of traffic, particularly on the highway, you know, road, state road like Route 7. My other one too, is just going back to, uh, the possible bike lane, it seems to be a little nebulous, nebulous, but, um, and this is more of a question, I've only looked here for 10 years, but it's, I'm a cyclist. My understanding that bicycle traffic on Route 7, in this area of Route 7, is not permissible, because it's dangerous enough as it is.
Well...
If anybody's foolish enough to do it, we have a couple rules where it's not permissible, at least in Rutland.
Okay, so, yeah.
So why a bike lane in a place to send people out into a place where there shouldn't be anyone?
Well, I would think that if, if, if you live in Pittsburgh in the village, and let's say you wanted to take a nice ride on Vermont 3, ride your bike, I mean, there are people that will ride their bike, they're gonna go over the bridge, or they'll go on the slip lane, and they'll go up, go up Vermont 3 and ride their bike. I mean, in Rutland, in Rutland, on...
Bridge people.
Yeah, but, but I've got people riding their bikes on roads that shouldn't be riding their bikes.
Well, what I'm asking a question too, is my understanding that you actually can't cycle on that section of 7, so why, why the bike lanes are nowhere where it shouldn't be anywhere?
It's not, it's not considered a bike lane, it's considered a shoulder. So this is the national highway system, so there's another, another whole picture. So this is called the national highway system, because it's the only north-south route on the western part of the state. So this is the tractor trailers, the trucks, it's a national highway center, so, sent, uh, highway road, so it needs to meet certain standards. So for instance, Vermont 9, that's on the national highway system, it's where the truckers, it's a, it's a, it's a, that's the east-west route. I-89 is national highway. I-91 is national highway. US 7, from all the way, pretty far north, where...
St. St. Alton.
It's, it's where, it, it actually kind of stops as the national highway, where it kind of intersects with I-89, because I-89 takes that traffic. But, so it has to meet certain standards. I'm, they have a picture of a bicyclist on there, just showing that you have an extra-wide shoulder that, you have a sidewalk on here, so if you have a sidewalk on your bridge, you're telling people that they can walk on that bridge, so that's no different than telling people that they can ride their bike on that bridge.
One's in the travel lane, and one's safely off the road.
No, 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 if you look, you look, you've got a sidewalk, a real sidewalk now, there's a sidewalk. If you're telling, if you're telling people there's a sidewalk, that they can walk on a sidewalk, there's nothing that tells me that I can't ride my bike on the sidewalk, or, you know, as a kid, I rode my bike on a sidewalk. And now you've got an extra shoulder, so there's gonna be bicyclists. The part of Route 7 that you can't, a limited access highway, you cannot have bicyclists. So from, from Rutland down to Wallenford, you can't have any bikes on, on US 7.
But the difference between a sidewalk and a shoulder is, the shoulder is the same level as the road. A sidewalk has got a curb to at least provide some protection.
But we're talking like, I don't know what the width of this room is, but, you know, this shoulder is like from the window to about here, a pretty wide shoulder. And then you've got a travel lane.
Why does it have to be there? I...
We can, because of the tractor trailer trucks.
I get it.
Because it's because you need to have, for the amount of traffic that you have, based in the Vermont State Design Standards, you need to have certain travel lane widths and certain shoulder widths. If you, if you, if you go in Brandon...
Even across the bridges?
Yeah, yeah, even across the bridges.
I, I just want to make one other point, what about 22A, that's considered a truck route, so...
Yeah, 22A is a truck route.
All right.
But it's not on the national highway system.
I, I remain baffled.
But if you look at, if you look, look at what they just did in Br, look at what they just did here in Pittsburgh. Once, you're, you can't tell yet, but wait till you see what those shoulder widths are in segment one. Guess what? They're probably eight to 10 feet wide. Look at what you did in Br, look what, if you drive, drive north in Brandon, where they, we did all, not, not, we don't want to talk about downtown Brandon, that's a little different and unique, but we're talking about the segment that they did before that, you look at your shoulder widths, and you look at your travel lengths. They're pretty wide.
Wouldn't that be considered a breakdown lane as well?
It's considered a breakdown lane, thank you for that terminology. Exactly, that's part of it.
Very important.
And so...
And I hate to say, Carol, but you know, if, if, things just happen, after that road was finished up by Outer Valley, my brother-in-law, Charlie Thurston's mother, was involved in a terrible accident, she died, she was killed in the shoulder.
Well, but in her life, it was a part there, yeah.
But I'm just saying, there was an accident, you know, the shoulders and so forth, it, you know, we, we gotta get, we gotta get back to one point about the fact that we're still talking about the village. And when your Act 250 permit was filed a year ago, the person that filed it said that it was in the town. This is not in the town, this is in the designated village, and certain criteria apply regarding the town plan and so forth. It's Act 250 criteria, but just to make this select board aware, that, you know, this is the village. Our town plan says we're supposed to maintain the character of the area, we're to preserve big trucks coming through Woodstock, they got a beautiful bridge over there. Why Pittsburgh has to get some bridge that looks like this is beyond me. We're not, we've got a nice, we've got a nice town here. We've got good community spirit. Whenever somebody asks to step up, they step up. And I gotta tell you, this isn't for us. I want to see a bridge down there. I don't want, this has been going on long enough. When Lois Blitzer Stark was alive, she was complaining about the sidewalks. There's never anything that can come down to do the sidewalks. Well, no, you gotta wait to do the road. We've got moved from Segment 1 to Segment 2 to our own thing. Then we had to request an Act 250 permit because they said, something, not Carol. Somebody said, oh no, we don't need an Act 250 permit. Well, when the legal deal's gotta happen, and they did. So it's, Carol's acted in very good faith. We need to get this done. We need to get that bridge fixed. We don't want to have an issue down there where all of a sudden it's unsafe to go across. But we want to maintain the character and we're trying to send this signal to those people. Now, you people, I'm sure, I don't know if Alicia remembers, Dave probably does, we had a proposal that was called a roundabout down there. And then they engineered a roundabout down there. It was crazy. And evil didn't want it. And it went away. But we're just spending all this money, all this time. Take the cumulative time of every single individual in here to go through this. I know we have to go through it, but don't want it. It's not necessary. And what the engineer said at the time when they were doing a roundabout, he said, there's just certain places that you can't just apply. It doesn't fit here. It might fit over here. And I said, well, what saves this area? You know, everybody comes in and says, oh my God, you've got so much going on. Man said, you've got sight distances. Now, you know, there's a few people in this room that remember this. That was my father's mobile station. It was Sandy's and mine in 1989. Look at how close pumps are to the road. You know what happened? They moved Mrs. Hennessy's house across the road and they built this mobile station. Then you know what the state did in '58? They dropped the road right next to the pumps. My father, look where the shadow is. The shadow's right on the edge of the road. My father wouldn't pump gas there. Because cars used to get fueled in the rear. He was afraid he'd get crunched. When Sandy and I redesigned this station, we went to the state, we went to the District 3 office and docked with an engineer there by the name of Maranus Van Cleef. And then his subsequent replacement. Can't remember his name. Dave Lathrum, I think was his name. And he loved it. We moved the pumps and everything back. My father said when we were doing it, you're making a mistake. He said, the state's gonna come in and say, look at all the land we got. Now, our property then went right out into this green. When we were having the issues with the state to make this work, my lawyer suggested that we convey this land because that was our property. When the state put that lane in, they never took, they never came in and paid mobile for the property. They just did it. That's the way they did things.
Backing away.
Yeah. So we, in good faith, conveyed this land to the state. Oh yeah, we can do this. We can do this. If we ever had known that they were gonna try to take the chute out, because we always called it the chute, the slip lane, we would have never, never done it. We would have held our ground and, and we were very reasonable. The amount of money that we got for this didn't even cover the cost of the oil. We paid a surveyor to survey Route 7 from the Rutland town line to the Brandon town line. Things just recently paid because we had to make arrangements to pay him. The other thing that I'd like to say is this is taken from Pittsburgh's now and then. This was the bandstand that was down there. Notice the road configuration. Been that way for 200 years. There was a gazebo on that green. That green is not historic. According to the state, according to the state people today. And then this one came from Joel Gonya's father's post garden. This was before there was a bridge, before there was a road there. That was a footbridge. Because the bridge used to get taken out during the floods. But just to give you some sort of an idea about history, there is history that exists down there. This was all recovered from the historical society. So I just want you people to know, Sandy and I are close to 60 years old. We've been there a long time. And we would not have been there if it wasn't for just about every single person in this room's patronizing us. And we certainly appreciate it. I don't want to see somebody get, I don't want to see accident after accident after accident. And that's your story.
I asked him in the beginning, has there been a lot of accidents? Is that why they've come up with this design?
I don't believe it was because of, it's not considered, they have, um, like, they call it high accident locations that get special funds or, that's how sometimes a lot of signals go in. Because it's considered like a high accident, or they, you do it in a sector, let's just call it high accident. This is not a high accident. They have an accident. I did provide you, I think, with some accident history um, for that area. It's not a high, it didn't appear to be high accident, but it, it doesn't appear that way. Problem with, with the accident reports these days is that, you know, when you have a fender bender or things like that, which it's an accident, um, they don't get reported. Because it's less than, you know, $5,000 or something like that. They don't get reported. So that's been part of the problem when it comes to accidents. Uh, it's usually, it's the fatalities and it's the, uh, you know, the real expensive ones that end up getting reported.
One reason, I mentioned that, well, there's a couple of reasons, but south of Rutland, they're having a difficulty on Route 7. Because there's been down by Hojos or down in that area.
Yep.
There's been quite a few people that got hit trying to cross the road and whatever. But that's recently been recognized as a higher accident area. And that's causing for study. It's causing for change. I'm aware of that. I've heard about it.
Yep.
This, this here hasn't created that problem. So you can't look at this plan and say, well, we're doing, we're offering this to correct a safety problem. Because it's not there. It doesn't exist. My personal feeling is, and I don't know about anybody else in this room, but I think we're safer right the way it is today than we ever will be with this here. I don't know if anybody else agrees with me or not.
I'm not gonna say that that may not be true. I think one of the biggest issues that we haven't even discussed yet is how do you maintain traffic on this? Okay? So we've got, so the plan is, which we didn't even kind of go over the slide and I, my computer's off, I'm not gonna. But, um, so the plan was, it's gonna be like three phases. So contractor comes in, they're gonna put in a temporary bridge. That literally is going to be on Mr. Ransomson's front lawn. And basically people are gonna be able to see in the bedroom window. I mean, it is what it is. And you know, they've been compensated for this, but he's being really affected by the project. Um, so traffic's gonna be moved onto that. It's gonna come off. If you're traveling north, you're gonna go, there's gonna be no island. There's gonna be nothing there, that whole Route 3. You're gonna have a temporary bridge. You're gonna drive over that temporary bridge and you, you'll be able to go straight up because it's, it's not a slip lane, but you don't have to take a big right-hand turn. But the intersection's gonna be redone temporarily. So we put traffic over there. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, 15 miles an hour, 20 miles an hour, maybe very slow. Um, and so while they're doing that, they're gonna build a portion of the bridge on the east side. There's also, we can talk about it, but there's gonna be a temporary footbridge that's gonna hold the water line temporarily while they're building the new bridge. So we get that all situated. So people always have access. Um, so they'll build that section wide enough to have two lanes of traffic on that, southbound. They'll remove the temporary bridge and then, the way this is planned, build the rest. The way it's designed right now. The final plan.
But you remove the temporary bridge and finish the.
Finish the rest of the bridge. Would be, they're, they're only gonna, they can only build, so the temp, the issue with the temporary bridge is that it's gonna have to go over part of the existing bridge right now. So they won't be able to, they can't remove, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tricky. It's a tricky constructability. And when they came to you guys in 2015, the way they had planned on building that bridge was, was, if I had been able to give the presentation, I could show you, but, um, it could be three phases, something a little bit similar to what I said, but there also was gonna be a phase where they were gonna build, maintain traffic, let's say, on the east side, two lanes. They were gonna be able to build a portion of the new bridge. And then move traffic over to one side. Then they were gonna have something where they were gonna do the middle section by putting north traffic this way, southbound traffic over this way. And it was just a very, it was gonna take maybe three summers to get it built. That was part of their concern at the time when they presented this to you. That was in 2015. It was, you know, kind of a conceptual type of idea. And then when they started looking, really looking into it, they realized it wasn't really a, um, it wasn't the best way to go with this project, with all the traffic, with maintaining the traffic. And so somewhere in that timeframe, that preliminary, they actually came up with the design where they were going to, they were still eliminating the slip lane. They were gonna build the bridge wider, but they were gonna have like a grass strip on the bridge, or like a striped on the bridge. Still eliminating the slip lane. And then we came up with, in 2017 is when they came up with the idea that they presented at the time. So maintenance of traffic is, is a very tricky thing. And I think everyone has witnessed that. That travels north and south in this area of Route 7 between the Brandon work, what's going on here, you know, how they're trying to maintain, always have to maintain two lanes of traffic. You know, if we could, if we could like detour traffic, boy, it would save so much money and time. You could have a new bridge in like, you know, 40 days versus having to, um, go two construction seasons. So, but because of the traffic, we can't detour. So we, we recognize that. That's why everyone's been trying to maintain the two lanes of traffic. So, I mean, to be honest, I mean, we were very, very, so if you look at the last, last, second to the last sheet, you know, where are we at? So the contract plans are completed, slash final plans are done. The right-of-way is just about there. Um, the utility relocation has happened, pretty much, it's, it's, looks like they've got most of the lines all moved over now, right?
Yep.
It's all done. Um, we were hoping to advertise this project in November because construction's starting next April, with construction being completed in 2024. Um, we still, there has been, um, an Act 250 hearing has been scheduled, I think, um, for the end of October, so based on the results of the Act 250 hearing, it will be determined whether the project will record or will stop. Um, I'm gonna, you know, I, I always try to take what I hear and try to apply it to what I have. Um, I do have a lot of, um, truck turning movements and you look at, everyone has this, uh, flash sheet. And it says, for more information, go to this web, you know, outside Vermont Agency, project structures. And then there's a little five-digit number, six-digit number with a letter. What I'm gonna do, and I can't guarantee that it will be done tomorrow morning, but hopefully by tomorrow afternoon. Um, I will put, um, some of the, I provided Mr. Conway with, um, a bunch of truck turning movements that I provided for different types of trucks, for different scenarios. I mean, there's also the concern of how trucks are gonna turn during the construction scenario. I'll share that with you guys. Um, also, I had a PDF that I was gonna show on my screen um, of the traffic control, how that was gonna happen, how, how that was gonna be handled. It's part of the project plan. And I just pulled a few of those sheets out because you don't need to see everything. Um, and I'll have that on there. I think if you go to that website right now, um, the final plans are on there. And they're probably, Dave, the final plans for this project were done about a year ago originally. Um, they've made updates to those plans, but those I think are on this, on that website right now if you were interested in looking. I think you have looked at, I think I had put some stuff at one point on that website.
A lot of stuff.
I know. So there's just a couple files right there, there right now, but I'll add some more information so that you can see what I provided, Mr. Conway, with respect to some of these, where the consultant has actually taken different, has taken a fire truck and showed maneuvers.
Most of that was getting into the station, getting fuel.
Right, right. I know that, right, but.
It shows the movements going in.
But it also shows like a truck taking a right-hand turn on to Vermont 3 in different scenarios and stuff. Uh, but I'll just, you know, that's public information. I'll just throw that up there so that you can take a look if you want. It's easier for you to look on a screen or something. Um, you can zoom in and out.
What will the issue be at Act 250 hearing?
So at the Act 250 hearing, if that, if that's held, basically there were, I think, six items of concern for Mr. Conway to begin with. And we resolved four out of the six, I believe. The only two, um, I think, issues, if I'm correct, is the green. And, well, that was the issue, is the real issue, is the green. Um, and then I think I, I provided, uh, he was concerned about the tanker trucks accessing his station from all the different directions.
As well as trucks getting fuel, because, but.
While we did that was a different, the last one we did was the specific, specific, which was like, that was what we call a WB 62, and I think that was 50, a 53 footer. Um, and it showed the turning movements. And I, and regardless, any way those trucks get on there, you know, they, they are going to access, in some cases it works out okay, some cases it's a little questionable. Um.
But this will all be decided at Act 250.
Right. So that's kind of stuff, that's the kind of the issues, but those are the only two really issues left was the, the green and, um, some of the turning movements. But I think some of the other things that you had brought up to begin with, we resolved a year ago, just about.
Well, I think if you left, I'm getting the consensus, this is to wrap it up, because your people have more than to listen to all of this. Um, I think I could convince my wife that we would no longer request SaaS at an Act 250 hearing. Do the bridge and you leave the existing roadway as it's been. I think there's been a lot of input put in here, and I, and I know you're a lady that listens because we've worked with you for now for over a year. And I also think that we need to move this forward. And I don't, I don't have it in front of me, Carol, but I studied the 2015, the temporary bridge is in there. And obviously we've come, come to this point. And I think with all the engineering, it was engineered in 1931 by Abe Bishop. He was the bridge engineer down there. So this was all, this was all engineered and it's, it's worked very well. Even, I showed you a picture of the covered bridge, the existing road layout. And, you know, the issues of Act 250 and so forth will be argued at that point. But we're looking for the consensus of the people that are here. And again, as I told you before the hearing, this is not a regional concerns meeting. There's a lot of people that live on Oxford. There's a lot of people that live in the other parts of Pittsburgh, like Dave Mills lives in Florence. And Alicia lives in the Village, and Hank lives out, and Tom lives in the Town. And we've all gotta, we've all gotta come together. And we're telling, I, I'm getting the consensus and I've been telling you, we don't want to change the road. We want to build the bridge and it's been going on too long. Let's get it done.
Yeah. Well, and following along that, I think we all get that during construction, our green is gonna disappear. That's, we get that and we fully understand that. And we understand it's probably gonna be a mess there for two, three years. But when you put it all back together, at least personally, I want the green back and I want the slip lane. Other than that, and, and, and not all of these lanes, because I think you're just making a big mess.
I just have one question. So in 2017, I'm not sure who was on the board at the time, but that was all brought up and, and I'm not saying, um.
No, 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 no. I was here, Sandy was here.
They didn't talk about that?
They were here for 10 minutes. I got in my file, the Doug Benow's car. His, and I also got somebody else.
John Byatt, John Byatt.
Yep. And I also got somebody else. And this was CLD, uh, what the heck was his name? Chris, uh.
Was Chris Mooney there?
No, not Mooney.
Because he works for B.J. I was just wondering.
No, Chris, I can't.
Oh, Chris Bean?
Chris Bean.
Oh, he was there?
And he was there. And we, and we had those plans. And we came in to the select board meeting. We've got the minutes to back it up. It was November 1st.
Yep.
We didn't bring any of that here tonight. But in the 2015 plan, it was very descriptive that they would remove the island, do the bridge construction, reinstall the island. Now, I didn't say anything here. I bought my dad out in '89. And they went over there and they hammered all of the bridge off that summer. And we had those two bay doors open. And we had to wear ear protection most of the time because they had big jackhammers out there breaking the concrete. And they redid the map. Now, when they did this in 2015, when they had the regional concerns meeting, there were three alternatives.
Yep.
One was to do nothing and maintain. The second one was to come in and replace the bridge map. The third one was to come in and replace the entire bridge.
The bridge.
They said, replace the bridge.
Yeah, that was in 2015, correct.
And has not been done. It's time to do it. And if, and like I said, if we can't get this done, and I don't want to put this through Act 250. I would like to know, to tell you here tonight, you guys fix the bridge and keep the road configuration, we drop the Act 250, you can put it out to bed, and let's get it done. I would, I would like to see some considerations.
More than fair.
Yeah. I don't know. I believe the consensus of everybody in this room agrees.
I believe the consensus of everybody in this room agrees.
Yeah.
I would think so.
And I think we should all, you know, show, show hands, leave it the way it is. And, um, if somebody disagrees, they disagree. But I think the whole consensus of everybody wants to keep it the same.
Well, one thing I'll point out is that this has not been put on the agenda as an action item or as a public hearing. It was simply to hear from the engineer as to her update, as to where things stood. If, if and when you wanted to have a public hearing or present options to the town as you have before, maybe that's something the board could put on a future agenda, if that's what you wanted to do.
So what I can do.
Or maybe you'll explain to us that maybe you're being polite, but it's Vtrans is right of way and you'll do whatever you want. Maybe, maybe that's the answer.
Oh, they won't, John.
No, they're not.
No, they won't. They do the right of way, right, Carol?
Right of way.
The right of way is three rods on, on the mold side, right?
It's whatever it is right now on my plan. So if that's three rods, it's three rods. I don't know what it is.
That's what the judgment order is.
Yeah, whatever. I don't, I just see the line.
No, she's a nice lady.
I just see the line. So we, so to be honest.
It's the ones that are above it.
Oh, yeah. So what I, I mean, I, I totally get it. Um, you know, it's very difficult to take something that is completely done. I mean, literally, like, I could let you say there was no Act 250 hearing, that we didn't have to do that. This project would be advertised, it's ready to go. Okay? Um, if, if there's a way to quickly redesign to a point where it can be done in a quick manner, we can, you know, look at that.
But you, I mean, and I guess along that line, I mean, and I guess my question is, because Rick went back to 15, you started talking about 2017.
There was a meeting here in 2017.
Yes, there was.
There was?
There's minutes. I saw the minutes.
Okay, and, and, and this configuration from.
2017 was on there.
2017 is on here, but that still shows the slip lane.
No, it doesn't show slip.
No, it's the 15.
That's the 15, shows the slip lane.
That's why I'm trying to be totally honest with you guys, what, what we provided to you. If you look on.
Okay, there's 15. Yeah, okay, you're right.
Yeah, so they had eliminated that. So that was presented to that, whatever select board was here at the time, because I know select boards change.
Three out of, three out of the five.
Yeah, but you know the funny part of it is, in my order is the ones that picked up on this. They got the dates, some of the dates in the corner are for 11-1. It was created on the date that they met with the select board.
Yeah, that's when they.
We never got this document. We came in and searched through the select board's minutes. We recovered the minutes online. We recovered the minutes from the ball. We did not recover any of this material, but Carol was told that was sent. But Carol, you know what? There's something that I suggest. Just deal with what you've got circled there. See how this says project location in your plan?
Oh, I know. It's so easy. I know.
Oh, I know. It doesn't include the intersection.
Good point. Well, yeah.
And you, and you really, and you really want to know, this man sitting next to me is an engineer, but he's not the one I hired. He's, this guy's a friend.
He's hired. Oh, I've heard the name.
So anyways, the most expensive one. But anyways, the, the, uh, this needs to be changed. And John, you, and you forwarded a link to John, and John forwarded to me on the plans, because I've been up here after John. John, got his plans on the road, got his plans on the road. He's been real good about sending it to me. I've got everything that John, and I've got the email strings, but here's the thing. You know that, that thing you sent him? I was looking through it this afternoon. One of those links takes you to the, it takes you to a page, and you can select two, the highway plans, and the other one is the 2015 project. So I guess you haven't done any scoping work for this, because it was for the bridge, it wasn't for the road.
No, there's, there's bridges right there.
Yeah, I understand, but the intersection was gonna be affected. This is the slip lane right here.
So that was, so that was from the 2015?
I know, but everybody that goes there, they're gonna see the 2015 plan. And I didn't know it till this afternoon, because I was really trying.
Well, I'll have to be honest, Carolyn, we were asked to update those, um, links so that you could see conceptual, preliminary presentation, scoping report, everything. And so we had, we were asked to make it more, like, have a one scoping report, two this, three this. So this was probably, I don't know, six months ago. And, um, in my attempt to get it all updated, I deleted most of the Pittsburgh stuff. So I had other things on there, so I just haven't updated that, because we wanted to make it. But I do know that there's only two things there. There was more on there. If you were to look at it, if you had looked at it a year ago, there was like five things, because I used that to help send you, send someone a present, because it's easier to, the plans are so big, you can't email. The only way you can look at them is through here, through, through the website. So I will get that, like I said, I'm gonna get that updated and provide some more information there. So like I said, you know, I can, um, take this back to my, um, to my boss and, um, discuss if there's an easier, is it, is it complicated? Can it, is it something that we can do to kind of go back to what was there, but do it in a way that doesn't involve, um, a year's worth of time? I am not going to obtain any more additional right of way from anyone. The right of way is there for this project, which includes putting in the temporary bridge, which is in about the area where the existing bridge is in.
Which you didn't have in 2015.
In 2015, they.
Didn't have it right away.
But you've already, you've already got all your plans from 2015.
No, no, those plans aren't, those plans are just the right of way plans. So you have to design the bridge.
But if the constructability of the bridge, because you brought that up.
It is, it is an issue.
Well, hold on. If the constructability, if the constructability of the bridge is an issue, if it was a lot narrower as opposed to the new design, a lot narrower, say similar width or maybe a little bit wider to the existing bridge, then, I'm not a civil engineer, but the constructability of doing a bridge down here is why this is now proposed, should be easier. And as well, I think a fundamental point that I would like to relay is the constructability of the bridge is an issue, and I'm completely sensitive to that, and get that. But to sacrifice or to create safety hazards to perpetuity because of the constructability of the bridge doesn't seem like something that is like beneficial to our community. To have to live with multiple lanes to navigate in, you know, a complex highway intersection in a village doesn't seem to be a full benefit to the community for the sake of constructability within, say, a year, year and a half. And I guess what I'm saying is, if the bridge is a lot narrower, then maybe that possibly, that's your job, not mine, but possibly the constructability and to be able to navigate that process would be easier if it wasn't so incredibly wide.
And as you say, some of that depends on what you're forced to deal with in terms of federal mandates on shoulders and things.
On shoulders, I have to, I have to look into that.
But we got existing, we got an existing highway over there, two chunks, so. I would, it gets pretty technical, because as I said originally, especially in historic districts, they don't replace bridges, they fix them. And I don't think that's a good alternative.
In some cases we do, but it gets to a point where eventually, if we can rehabilitate, trust is all we want. We can rehabilitate covered bridges in Pittsburgh.
And we came.
Roger, but, but at the end of the day, eventually, these covered bridges are gonna be totally replaced with, for a new covered bridges, because.
Really?
Well, and that's, because you can't, you can't, you can only.
I didn't think it would cover more than well.
Yeah, because they're historic, so, so.
It's always this bridge, too.
Well, it's historic, but it doesn't have the historic significance that a covered bridge has or a steel truss bridge. That's like, every interstate bridge, it's 50 years old now, they're all historic, but they're not historic. See what I mean? They're, they're not, they're not special.
The old covered bridge that stood there, there was a poem written about it. It was done in 1831, it's in the Pittsburgh building, that. It's pretty cool.
So like, I was involved a little bit on the Proctor Pittsburgh Covered Bridge, and they've done a lot of rehabilitations to that bridge, and they'll continue to rehabilitate it. But eventually, what happens is that there's just no, there's no more original laps.
It's fully rehabilitated.
It's been rehabilitated, and we ended up replacing it. Um, I rehabilitated, rehabilitated the Salisbury Cornwall Bridge, and that burned down, so, you know.
I think it had help.
Yeah, it wasn't me, but what was ironic is that there was a fire in my office that was caused by me.
I don't want to hear anymore.
And then that, then that, then that's a bridge burn, so. I do have. But so I, I mean, I'll bring this back. I understand where everyone's coming from, but it's not, like I said, just a question of just use what was in 2015, because nothing was really designed. It was all very big design work.
My dad told the story about, at some point, probably before 1900, one Halloween, there was a bunch of ambitious young boys down around the mills that had put somebody buggy up on the roof of the covered bridge.
Oh. It wasn't me.
I don't know if there were any pictures taken or not.
Yeah, that would be good.
Well, they used to dip over everybody's outhouse, too. That was a common occurrence.
My father and his brothers went over and took old Vern Bump's step. Never Mrs. Bump? She was a teacher at one of our school. Well, anyways, my father and his brothers went up over old Vern, come out, those steps weren't there.
Oh, no.
When my grandmother found out, they did hard time for Vern Bump for the summer.
So like I said, um, as far as this project's concerned, I, I, there's, you know, the utilities have been moved. They're not being moved again. So I guess.
They don't need to be.
Yeah, I know. So, 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 you know, again, looking at, you know, I just need to be able to look and study and determine whether or not it's an option to keep in the neighborhood. I cannot give, you can tell me that, we're not gonna accept this, but like John said, it is a state bridge. And, you know, we try to do what we can for the towns on our state bridges as far as trying to meet their needs. Um, have we met your needs here? I'm not sure. I was not, had I been involved with the project from day one to now, I would exactly know why we're, where we are. It bothers me, um, you know, I think communication is very important, and I'm not sure it was communicated well with you in 2017 about what was actually occurring. I mean, it was obvious that there was no slip lane there, but did they explain everything in a manner that you understood it? I don't know. I wasn't here. Um, because they went from that meeting, they went directly into where we are now. So like I said, from 2015 to 2017, something went on, conversations were had, decisions were made, um, from a bunch of people. Um, so, and I can't speak because I wasn't the fly on the wall, I wasn't there, I wasn't involved. And I've done as much homework as I can to find information, because I was trying to find information for you, and I couldn't find emails or documentations or anything like that. Then again, there was this fire in 2018 at the National Light Building where we lost, um, a lot of our documents because of me. But, um, I wasn't there when the fire started, but it was at my desk. I lost everything. My 30-year career, lost everything. Um, so I joke about it now, because I'm over it, but I wasn't over it then. But, you know, there was files and stuff, like we had, and everything was water damaged, and, you know, we lost a lot of stuff. Um, that's not an excuse, but my homework, trying to find things. We used to keep everything in folders, you know, now everything's on computers, which still isn't good. Everything's in emails, which still isn't good, because when a project manager changes and you don't get the whole picture.
Yeah, but one thing that I, John, I just like to kind of wrap it up. You've got a long ways to go home. Um, but the, uh, the federal regulations also require that you have hearings.
Yep.
This was a meeting tonight, being open to the public. This was not a hearing. Originally, we thought we were gonna be able to get a hearing, so I don't, I don't know where we are in the status of that. But I do, I've got to believe that, um, these people were under the impression that this was in the town, and it wasn't. And highways divide, highway design in compact and designated village is very clear, and that's where this area is. And this highway design is not consistent or compatible with that. So I'd really like to make sure, because that's kind of like what, when we talk with the lawyer people, that's what they're saying. So, I mean, your, your Act 250 permit applications, file with Act 250. We have copies of it. We've met with the district coordinator. So, you know, I think a lot can be cleaned up here if this gets to the proper people. Because you've got to, you've got to follow your own rules and regulations with regard to highway design within the village.
So I will take this all under advisement. I will, um.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, I, I'll see what I can do. Like I said, the first case scenario is we advertise next spring. Um, what does it, you know, at the end of the day, it is what it is.
Who'll get it, John?
Oh.
I got copies of this.
I could retire tomorrow, so.
You said you were gonna get this done before I retired. I told you I didn't want to do this the hard way.
They won't let me retire, because.
They can't find anybody else that wants to work.
Right.
Yeah, I know. Um, so, you know, I, you know, whether, if the town wants to do a public hearing to, you know, if I can't make this work, and if the town wants to have a public hearing, we can do that. Like I said, the Act 250 hearing, we need to keep it on the books, we need to keep it there, um, because we can't risk, um, losing the date regardless of whether, you know, if I'm able to say, hey, you know what, I think I can make it work, great. If I say, uh, I don't know if I can make it work, we have a hearing, because it's just the power to be.
Well, we had the talk with the attorney and with Kim Letzko. We told her that we were gonna have this meeting tonight, and we see where we went from there. And, you know, motions can be filed to extend, or motions can be filed to dismiss.
I like dismiss, but.
Yeah, well, let's, let's get it done.
Yeah, uh, so simple. I only have 30 other projects.
Well, make this, make it 29, get this one up.
So yeah, so I will, it's a long weekend, um, and next week's a short week. We're going to Maine again next Friday.
Where are you going? We're gonna go to. Oh, my God, there they are. Ooh, we know, a gun court.
Yeah, anyways, um, but I will get working on this between now and next week. And I'll try to get back to the town, so that they're where, where we at, as well as Mr. Conway and see.
And Mrs.
I know. Sandy's right there, I know. She's there, she's so quiet today. She made one comment tonight.
I have, I gotta go home.
So, um, you know, I think that this was good, because I, like I said, I was, and then, and then I was here in 2019 to give an update. And I think you had asked me to come at that point to give an update. We were working, getting the right of way. So I feel like I've been working on doing what I thought was on the right track. Um, and we.
But I didn't know you were coming here in 2019.
Because I didn't know you, and I didn't tell you. I'm not a troll.
Well, your chief of right of way, we have a letter right in the file that said, "All Vtrans people will consult with you with designs and changes." So we found a lot of consulting.
Ah, see, but I never got that letter, so I didn't know. Yeah, we've been doing that. But anyway, so, you know, and I was here, and I, I pretty much kind of explained a little bit of where we were at. And so we were in, and we did have some right of way issues. We actually had the right of way technically cleared, um, but we did have some issues with the burrows, because they're whatever, but, um.
And we had it, and you got that taken care of, remember? There's somebody you are.
I, I was able to engineer you out of the project.
So I got, as I said, I got.
So I didn't have to work with him for right of way, so I.
Is that your keyboard?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, what time is it?
Almost nine.
I'm gonna go home.
Quarter to nine.
Quarter to nine. Thanks for your time.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Bye.
Be careful on cords and things.
But did I hear that there was someone in the LCT this whole time?
Yes.
Jesus.
Yeah, who knew? I think they're probably still there.
Okay.
Did you want to excuse yourself? Feel free.
Thank you for the warning. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks.
Please watch your step.
Enjoy.
Yeah. Technology is messy.
I'd like to plant some trees in the middle of that bridge.
Thanks, everybody.
What do you think? Yeah. While I'm there.
There you go.
We don't take any action. Are you gonna bring Hank?
As our delegate.
It sounds like she's gonna see.
You okay with that, Hank?
I can't let you out of the room like that. I feel bad that they.
Taking me home before.
Oh, I know. I know where he lives.
You should, you should have, John, you should have called me out. I didn't realize he's been sitting on this phone, on the phone this whole time.
Well, what did you want me to do? You want to put, you want to put them, you want to put them on first and then have these people wait for three hours?
Isn't this, we're just reappointing you as our delegate?
Isn't this, we're just reappointing you as our delegate for town meeting?
Oh, I thought you went up to VLCT about the town manager recruitment.
That's what we're doing.
Yes.
Want VLCT now?
Yes, I think we do, right?
Yes.
They haven't started charging us yet, I don't think.
Okay.
Rick McGuire, are you there? Oh, okay.
Probably gave up on us. Probably.
I would have. God, that's two hours ago.
Oh. I think the chair could have had a shorter leash on the bridge discussion.
Well, I was really interested in the bridge discussion.
Well, no, it was a good, most of it was a good discussion.
I agree. I agree.
But it appears somewhere, nobody, that stuff that came out in 2017 never got to us.
Not like.
Or didn't, or didn't.
Not where we saw what was actually going on. Because I remember her being here in 19 and, you know, telling, well, there were no maps of what was going on or anything, just telling us what was going on.
They're going to be done with the bridge.
Wait, are you there?
Think he gave up on us.
How is it that he, we lost the connection?
No, he's still on.
Oh, okay.
Well, did he have, did he already? There you go.
Is Rick McGuire there?
Should we bang out some other little items while we're waiting?
We sure can, yeah.
All right, updating Pittsburgh Day planning. It's still happening on September 4th. Anything of note?
Uh, no.
Good. Next. All right, then the Chittenden reclassification is not going to interfere with us getting water.
We're trying to get confirmation and I'll continue to monitor.
Awesome. And what else we got? So Tom Markowski resigned from the planning commission and it was.
I'm trying to write.
It was. Oh, I'm sorry. Can't you listen to the recording later? Sorry. Okay. All right, so it was recommended that, from the planning commission, that Rob Spenceley be appointed.
And he has agreed to serve. There's also been a proposal that Donna Wilson be appointed as the new second alternate.
Okay.
She's a former Lister and Mark Winslow endorsed that idea.
All right, awesome.
I think we probably need some action.
Yeah. Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, can we, want to take, we can take assessors' error and omissions on both the Flanders and Clucking Cafe?
Yep.
Okay.
Briefly, it's just two name changes. First, because we sold a piece of land we took on tag sale to David's Flanders and she'd like permission to make that change effective for the 2021 grand list. And also Harvest Moon sold some of its items to Clucking Cafe and she'd like to have the owner name change and value change, which is a $15,200 assessment, which is a change from the $16,000 previously assessed to Harvest Moon.
So moved on both of them.
Say again.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Jen Pop is on. Do we not have, is the guy from VLCT all on?
He's on, but.
But you can't hear him?
Can you hear him?
Can you hear Jen at all? Is she?
I haven't. I just asked her to unmute.
If not.
Jen, are you there?
Hello?
Oh, hey.
Where's Jen? Okay.
Um, we've asked Jen because she had so many upcoming.
We can't hear anything on this end. I don't know.
Oh, no.
I think somebody from the town has muted it.
I hate technology.
Hi, Jen.
Really do.
Hi.
Are you able to hear us, Jen?
I'm sorry?
Can you hear us?
Now I can.
Yeah, we just asked you to be here since you had so much good programming coming up and I know Alicia had suggested you come here and use our platform to let us know what you're up to.
Okay. Yeah, so I've been pretty busy getting ready for soccer. We have soccer that's going to be starting. The first practice for the U-10 and U-12 teams will be on October 9th. And then the U-6 and U-8 teams will start on the 11th, or September, sorry, not October. And then we have the 5K and corn run Saturday morning during Pittsburgh Day. The cornhole tournament will be at noon on Pittsburgh Day. And then square dancing starts Wednesday, September 8th from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Lothrop Gym. Let's see. And then we have our disc golf tournament on September 19th. And we have Vint will be at the Pittsburgh Village Farm September 11th. October 2nd, Sarah Stories will be at the RAC. And they'll have an author there by the name of Ashley Wolf from 10:30 until 12:00. And they'll be handing out books after to the older children that attend. And the craft fair will be October 9th and that's from 9:00 until 2:00 with the chili code on the same day from 11:30 to 1:00. And then on October 10th, the Sheep and Wool Festival will be at the RAC area from 11:00 to 4:00. And on the 23rd of October, we'll have the pumpkin party and that'll be in collaboration with the McFlora Library. And then Trump Retreat will be on October 31st.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm sorry to have kept you waiting for so long.
It's okay. It was, it was interesting to listen to all the bridge talk, so.
Okay.
That's very polite of you.
I know. Thank you very much, Jen.
Yeah, you're welcome. I also wanted to add that I did start a community email for all of our sports and events. So if anyone would like to sign up to receive the email, if you could email me at recreation@pittsburghvermont.com with your email, that would be great. And then I can add you to the list.
Awesome. What was that again? The email address? Awesome. Thank you.
That's Jen's regular email handle.
Oh, then I have it already.
Sorry, I was muted for a little bit, so I couldn't know when I was supposed to come on.
Okay. Yeah, again, so sorry.
It's okay.
All right. Does anyone have anything for Jen?
No, I'd say thank you and keep up the great work.
I know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. You have a good night.
Should probably try VLCT one more time.
I, uh, I think that's my cue.
Oh, yeah, it's on there.
That's very good to get your cue two and a half hours later than you thought. No worries. Thank you very much for being patient and we're all yours.
Well, I had been listening to the whole discussion about the bridge and then suddenly my sound went off and I thought it was my headset. So I switched headsets. I might have missed something, but I guess, I guess we're good now.
Yep.
I also assume there's no video. Is that?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. So I'd love to do this without my presentation, but maybe I don't need that anyway.
We have your, we have your presentation in terms of all the documents you and Abby sent our way.
Well, so I won't add too much to that. I'll probably just switch over to questions. But I should formally introduce myself. I'm Rick McGuire and I'm the executive search consultant for the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to discuss our executive search proposal with you. Our goal is to help your community navigate the important task of selecting a new town manager if we're selected to do that job. And we've, as you see in the proposal, we've developed a process that can easily be tailored to your needs. The process outlines six basic steps. And so my question is, at this point, would you like to just respond to questions? Or would you like me to just respond to questions? Or would you like me to go through each step and give a brief summary?
Brief summary.
Yeah, brief summary would be great.
Okay, I can do that. So selecting a town manager is obviously an important task for you. I retired from my job as town manager after 22 years in Williston and I saw them go through the process and I know it was a struggle for them to have to find a replacement after all those years. So the road ahead can be a lengthy and difficult one. And so our job is to help make the process easy for you and transparent. At the same time, the process is designed to educate the candidates about Pittsburgh so that when the time comes for a decision to be made by both the select board and the preferred candidate, both parties will have the information needed to make this information or make this important decision. And the first step in the process is to kind of take a step back and define the type of person that you're going to be looking for. And some of the elements of that include a review of your job description for the position, the pay range, and another part, which you may not be as familiar with, is developing a profile of the position and the town. And I think we included a sample of that from the town of Jericho. So you have had that. You get some idea through that profile of what's detailed. And this profile can be used by those who are doing the interviewing on behalf of Pittsburgh, but also for those who are being interviewed so they have a better understanding of the community. Another element is confidentiality. It's an important piece of this for the candidates because some of the candidates most likely will be working for another community and they don't want their position to be jeopardized in those communities, especially in the early stages of the process. The second step is then to solicit the various applications, do a quick review of them. And in this part of the process is probably beyond my value of my time, it's probably the most expensive piece for the direct costs because it involves paying for various advertisements. Some you can get fairly inexpensively, some could be pretty expensive. But we charge you just for the cost of, the direct cost of whatever the cost of advertising is. And we don't place any ads without getting the, our advertisement plan, which includes the costs approved ahead of time by whoever is your legitimate for handling this information. So once we've advertised, then we have to go through a screening process and we'll work with whoever you identify as your screening committee. Each town handles it differently. Sometimes it's just select board members or subcommittee of select board. Sometimes it's a combination of community people, staff and select board members. Whatever you want to do, that will find a way of working with that committee. And the idea is to narrow the field down to a manageable number for the first round of interviews. And generally, you want to interview six to eight people during that first round. Any more than that, it gets to be a rather lengthy process because each interview, you kind of have to do sort of about an hour for each interview. So once you've gone through that first round of interviews, you narrow it down to a smaller number. Usually it's two to three. And then you go through a process of scheduling a final interview. And this final interview can actually involve a number of different steps and it can all be done in one day. You could require each candidate, for example, to provide you a response to some written questions that you have. You could give them a tour of your community. You could have them meet with your existing manager, John, for an hour or so to learn more about the position. You could include meetings with a small group of staff people. And the most important part of this would be the final interview with the select board. After the process is over and the select board has listened to all the different parties who have participated in the process, then if they, or feels comfortable with one of the candidates, then the next step is for the league to hire outside investigator to conduct a background investigation. And in the past, when we did the project for Jericho, I did the reference check. And then when that information's all together, and that takes about a week, week and a half, maybe, we can provide a verbal report to the board as to what we found in the background investigation, which includes a credit check and as well as a reference check. And then if the board wishes to offer the position of someone at that point, we can provide some, a little bit of assistance in getting the negotiations started for an employment. Which is usually a good idea to lay out the terms of employment, including pay, benefits, things like that. And so that's pretty much the various steps that we've outlined and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
There was one question at the last meeting and that had to do with town administrator versus town manager. Do you have any thoughts on the differences between the two so the board can know whether they want to have another town manager?
Well, the difference is the level of authority that one has over the other. The town administrator has only whatever authority is directly delegated to it by the select board. And that can vary rather dramatically. You could have a town administrator who has very little authority, pretty much anything other than following the day-to-day directions of the select board. Or like Jericho, the select board delegates just about everything as far as the day-to-day management of the community. And so the town administrator pretty much serves as a town manager for them. So why that's important is that it'll really affect the type of person that you want to attract to the position. So someone who is interested in being a town manager may have no interest at all in serving as a town administrator. So, you know, it's important to make that decision upfront. Either way, you can find someone who may be very good, but it just affects the type of person you would be looking for for the position. And as I understand it, the, well, it's, it's, I don't know how the position was created in Pittsburgh, but most likely it will take a, even town, oh, that's my understanding, townwide, so you change. If you're considering changing it, then you should do that before you get this process started, I would think.
No, we don't do that.
Doesn't look like there's a strong interest in that.
No.
Other questions?
Are you, would you charge a flat fee or an hourly fee? It wasn't quite easy for me to determine which. You've kind of given us a, maybe a cap below which, above which you would not bill hourly. Can you explain that?
That, that's correct. You're absolutely correct. I bill for my actual time, well, actually, the league bills for my actual time. And with the Noc Tukke is the top of the range there. That's for consultant time. For direct costs, we bill exactly what the, whatever costs are incurred. And we've kind of given you a range. I think in, when we did the Jericho job, the consultant time, we were close to the top of the range. The direct costs, we were quite a bit below, so overall, we were towards the bottom of the overall range. But each town's going to be different as far as demands and everything. But I think that, well, I don't, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
No, we just have to sit down and figure out what we're looking, you know?
What we're looking for.
Yeah, and put something together.
Thank you very much for your time and presentation, Rick. It sounds like the board will consider this matter and get back to you. It sounds like the board will consider this matter and get back to you, is that right?
Okay, well, we're available if you have any follow-up questions after this evening. I'd be happy to try to answer them. And we're available to help if you want our help. And your fee to contact, my references would be the chair of the select board from the town of Williston, who I worked with for quite a few years, and the chair of the Jericho Select Board, I'm sure would also be more willing to offer her thoughts on how the process worked in Jericho, because we just barely finished that project within the last couple of weeks.
Does VLCT, or has VLCT helped a number of towns retain, or recruit and hire town managers?
They have, although I'm not familiar with which towns over a period of time. My involvement is very new. I retired as town manager of Williston about a year ago, and I had conversations with Abby Friedman about the possibility of me helping out in this field. And they decided they wanted to take it on, and so Jericho was my first community. We have two or three other communities that have expressed interest of hiring us. And so, we'll have to see whether that moves forward or not. So, in a sense, this is new, but it's also old. If you follow me, my involvement is new. But the, I think the process that the league had followed before was not as extensive as the one that we've outlined in our proposal. And that's because of my experience, that I've had used this process for many, many department head-level positions over the 22 years I worked for Williston. And I found it to be successful, so I kind of used that process as the basis for this proposal. And I see, I think the league has seen the value in it as well, from the feedback we got from Jericho. So, long answer to your question, but the league has been doing this for a number of years, but not to the extent that it's outlined in the proposal before you.
We did that for you, I had...
Yeah, I think the league might have helped in my recruitment, but it's a long time ago. My memory paves me. But thank you very much again, Rick.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, and hope to hear from you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then, did I, did I see in the email packet that our, until we're talking about specific candidates, we need to be in open meeting when we're discussing what, what and whom we're looking for?
I think there's some discussion about how, in the materials, about how transparent you want to be. And as I saw that, just had it, there they go. You can have a process where you... I'm sorry, I don't have it right handy, but...
I know.
There was a couple, there was a kind of a fork in the road, and you had to make a decision about whether you want the candidate's names to be published to the community. He had suggested confidentiality, at least on that issue, so that people who are in existing jobs don't get...
No, 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 I'm saying, I had asked, I meant before we even talk about actual individual candidates, when we are discussing what, what type of candidate we're looking for. That should all be in open meeting.
Oh, I think so.
Put that on the agenda.
You can use neutral, neutral terms, neutral language.
So, yes, we should start talking about that next.
Next meeting.
All right, so we need to appoint a delegate to VLCT's town for your business meetings.
I've done that for 13 years.
All in favor, say aye. Have fun. They're only doing like a half day in person, right, and the rest is online?
Several days, they'll have little workshops on Zoom, yep.
All right, and then we just need to acknowledge that we saw that audit info, correct?
Yeah, if you will just scribble all five of your signatures somewhere on or near that line, so Chad knows that you've seen that they presented you with questionnaires, ones from Helen, ones from Liz, ones from Pat. And then the final matter is dog late fees. Due to COVID, the, I mean, the normal license date for dogs is April 1st. Due to COVID, there's been a delay in assessing late fees. Now that this emergency order is over, Helen has asked for permission to once again assess late fees for unlicensed dogs.
Sure.
So moved.
Second? Oh. You're not going to actually say second? All in favor, say aye.
Getting late.
And I suggest we take, as we close out our open meeting and go into executive, we maybe go into John's office?
Yeah.
So, we don't, you know, just to kind of give him time to clean up his equipment?
Yeah.